This is time, it's ten o'clock, we will go ahead and open up our regular session. Please join us in your place. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions or beliefs?
I have one addition, you have the carryover of the credit card. And to the district attorney update, department update, and developmental disability services.
That, I guess, you can take any public comment?
Yes.
Sure.
There's three for them.
And of course, if you could, just take any direct.
Hello, thanks. Good morning, commissioners, Mona Ward. What I'm going to present to you today, commissioners, I don't want you to believe a word that I say, I want you to do your own research, I want you to prove me wrong, please. The handouts that I have given you prove that egregious acts of blackmail on businesses in Lake County and in Oregon by a trader's governor and her henchmen are happening on a daily basis. Now, I was going to send this to you, I have given Sheriff Taylor his copy, but I wanted to make this a matter of record. What you're going to find in this packet is a my letter to Aaron Stevens, store manager of Safeway here in Lakeview dated February 5th, 2021. I want you to have this letter because I want you to understand the egregious violations of Oregon's Constitution and Oregon Revised Statute 659142. Do either of you know what that is? It's actually 659A142. It's in the packet here. It says that discrimination against individuals with disability by employment agency, labor organization, or place of public accommodation or state government is prohibited. And under number four, it says it's an unlawful practice for any place of public accommodation, resort, or amusement as defined in ORS 659A400, which I placed below, or any person acting on behalf of such place to make any distinction, discrimination, or restriction because a customer or patron is an individual with a disability. ORS 659A400, places of public accommodation are defined under 1A. Any place or service offering to the public accommodations, advantages, facilities, or privileges, whether in the nature of goods, services, lodging, amusement, transportation, or otherwise, that defines them. Commissioners, you have a duty to protect the private property rights of the people that you serve. The most important is our right to choose. You're an agent of the state, yes, but you have total jurisdiction within the Lake County, Oregon borders and its borders under health, safety, and welfare. The ordinance I asked you to write some time ago and one of your meetings set up. And all that the state can do is to sue the county, and that's not going to happen. So I'm going to give you in detail my letter to Aaron Stevens because I want it as a matter of public record. I was shopping, dear Aaron Stevens, I was shopping your store in North F Street, Lakeview, Oregon, February 3rd, 2021, when I was accosted by a female employee named Bobby Joe insisting I put on a mask. I cannot wear a mask for health reasons. Yet this employee, Bobby Joe, followed me demanding that I put on a mask or leave the store. I told Bobby Joe no several times. I did leave the store to go get the attached two documents that you have attached. To Safeway Albertson's, I have put them on notice. There is no law in Oregon, state, county, or city that requires citizens to wear a mask either in public or in business establishments, nor is there a regulation to require employees and patrons of those establishments to wear masks. All that exists is a mandate from Governor of Oregon, who has no authority over these matters. As the courts have stated, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees versus Olson, 1983, it is well settled that public officials have only such authority as is expressly given them by the Constitution and statutes, together with those powers and duties which are necessarily implied from the express brand of authority in reading 1983, an unlawful or unauthorized exercise of power does not become legitimated or authorized by a reason of habitu. A state regulation does not exist, does exist, excuse me, that prohibits public businesses from discriminating, as I have already stated to you. Employees are not enforcement agents. They have no authority to act as such. Employers are not medical professionals and have no authority to administer a medical examination or give medical advice, including advice to wear a mask. If a public business, in this case Safeway Albertson's Incorporated, refuses entry into its facility for not wearing a mask for health reasons, therein violation of the Oregon Constitution, which protects free movement against false imprisonment. No store may comply with a policy that violates Oregon law or my rights guaranteed under the Constitution. Laws were created by legislative bodies such as Congress or the Oregon State Legislature, not Governor Brown. Governors and mayors cannot enact law. Their executive orders are binding only on government employees and contractors under their jurisdiction, and I have put Safeway Albertson's on notice. I did leave the store to get back, to get the two attached documents that I just read. I returned to the store to find Bobby Joe and assistant manager Scott Dexter waiting for me, at which time Scott Dexter informed me that if I did not put on the mask, I would be forced to leave the store. I attempted several times to hand Scott Dexter the document attached, stating that he was violating Oregon Revised Statute 659142, and that Safeway is a place of public accommodation and could not discriminate against me, forcing me to wear a mask, and he refused to take it. I even offered Scott Dexter my phone at one point to call the sheriff, but he refused. Aaron Stevens, ignorance of the law is no excuse. As manager of Safeway, you have a duty to know and understand the law and train your employees as well, otherwise their actions violate the rights of your customers. By reading the attached two documents on this letter, you will see that you and your employees of Safeway are guilty of violating Oregon Revised Statute 659142, which prevents Safeway, a place of public accommodation, from discriminating against anyone, your employees and including me, by refusing service for not wearing a mask. There is no law. Neither you or your employees have the authority or training to enforce this mandate or any valid law for that matter. Therefore, the actions of your employees violated several criminal and civil codes and the Oregon Constitution, which protects my free movement against false imprisonment by detaining me without authority. This letter puts you, Aaron Stevens personally, and Safeway on notice to stop detaining me and trying to force me to wear a mask in your facility, or you will force me to take legal action against you personally and Safeway's board of directors. And I want you to understand these laws, Commissioner, these cases, I should say. An unconstitutional act is not law. It confers no rights, it imposes no duties, affords no protection, it creates no office. It is in legal contemplation as an operative as though it had never been passed. Norton versus Shelby County, 1886. And this is the crux of the whole thing. We have a God-given right to our own labor. Where does government get the authority to attach a fee to it and turn it into a privilege? Through licensing. No state shall convert a liberty into a license and charge a fee, therefore. Murdoch versus Pennsylvania, 1943. Where rights are secured by the Constitution are involved, there can be no rulemaking or legislation which would abrogate them. Miranda versus Arizona. The Constitution is superior to any ordinary act of the legislature. The Constitution and not such an ordinary act must govern the case to which they both apply. Those then who can controvert the principle that the Constitution is to be considered in court as paramount law are reduced to the necessity of maintaining that the courts must close their eyes on the Constitution and see only the law. This doctrine would subvert the very foundation of all written constitutions. Thus, this reduces to nothing what we have deemed the greatest improvement on political institutions, a written constitution. Maugnery versus Madison. And the most critical is, the rights of the individual are not derived from governmental agencies, either municipal, state, or federal, or even from the Constitution. They exist inherently in every man by endowment of your Creator and are merely reaffirmed in the Constitution and restricted only to the extent that they have voluntarily been surrendered by the citizenship to the agencies of government. The people's rights are not derived from the government, but the government's authority comes from the people. The Constitution but states again these rights already existing, and when legislative encroachment by the nation, state, or municipality, in this case Governor Brown, invade those original permanent rights, it is the duty of the courts to declare and to afford the necessary relief. The fewer restrictions that surround the individual liberties of a citizen, except those for the preservation of public health and safety and the morals, are contented the people and the more successful of the democracy. City of Dallas versus Mitchell, 1922. The Oregon Supreme Court Commissioners has failed its duty to apply the Constitution to the executive orders of Governor Brown. Therefore, it is the duty of this commission to protect the people's rights in Lake County. Please commissioners, write the ordinance for the people's sake, do what's right. You have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I am available with to do because I plan on going forward with this if they continue their abuse.
So, I just want to, just to clarify for my own edification. From what I've heard from a few different local businesses, my understanding is that the reason that they are enforcing this is because, you know, as we saw with Howard's, they can get fines from OSHA, there are all kinds of ramifications if they don't comply, you know, even if they don't personally agree with this mandate. It can have serious effects on their businesses if they don't comply. So, what's, you know, do you guys have anything to say as far as that goes? Because that's the biggest issue as far as I understand.
So for one, I totally agree with you. I, I agree that we shouldn't have to wear masks. But it's not against our rights. Just like wearing a seatbelt is not against our rights. And we have the right to bear arms, we have the right to pursue happiness. Doesn't say anything in there, but we have the right not to wear a mask. And so, but I, I agree with you. We, as a county, can't go over a state bond and say it's, I realize she says it's not a law, but in her executive order, she has more power than the President of the United States. And with a with a supermajority in the House and Senate, they're not dying to be able to overthrow her orders. And so it puts us in a tight spot. I wear masks for that specific reason that Danielle brought up is to protect our businesses. I don't, I don't want to do it. And it's just like a seatbelt, you know? We have to wear seatbelts, many of us don't want to wear seatbelts, but it's not against our constitutional rights.
Do you understand the Declaration of Independence, sir?
Yeah.
Do you know what your jurisdiction is?
Yeah. We're, we're agents of the state. And it says it in the Oregon Constitution. And county commissioners are agents of the state. And we are not, we are a home rule county, but we do not have a charter of our own. And we are a home rule that is statutory.
Okay. How many resolutions in a month's time do you write under health, safety, and welfare?
And even if we did write a resolution, it wouldn't put any order against the state, especially when businesses acquire their licensing through the state.
Bingo. Where does government get the authority to take our God-given rights, turn them into a privilege by attaching a fee and forcing us to buy a license? Therein lies the problem. So as I see it, commissioners, if you want to do it, you find a way, you don't, you find an excuse. Thank you for your time.
May I speak to the ADA, please? Um. My name is Judy Mannyadis. I worked under ADA and Public Law 94142 for a number of years. The American with Disabilities Act was designed that there would be equal access for any individual with a disability, and you were not allowed to discriminate against it. Federal law trumps state law always. Especially when it is given to an individual. You're speaking to the seatbelt law? Absolutely. But that comes with a caveat. I have a friend that had a scar within her heart. So she has a scar right down here. She can be damaged if she wears a seatbelt across here because instead of saving her life, it would take her life. And so she is allowed by law not to wear the seatbelt because she has a disability. You take, for instance, I have environmental asthma. That means that my bronchia, you know, little bits and pieces of stuff come into my lungs. I choke up. Have you ever taken one of those medical masks and done this with it? And all sorts of puffy stuff comes out? That's what an individual with asthma is breathing in. The American with Disabilities Act forced all businesses to make a wheelchair accessible, made all public bathrooms have to have reasonable accommodations for handicaps. The equal access doesn't mean that you can bring stuff out to a car. It means that an individual can go into a business and can shop like everyone else and be treated like everyone else. Under Public Law 94142 and the American with Disabilities Act, when I was teaching people with handicaps, a child that was, had cerebral palsy, that also had perhaps HIV, would be in a classroom with other children and changed when he soiled his pants in that same classroom, exposing everybody to the possibility of contracting either HIV or some other Hep C, any of those other things. Because that was the American with Disabilities Act giving access to all children with disabilities. A person with anxiety attacks, wearing a mask is absolutely catastrophic to them. They could have a panic attack at any time. I'll give you another example, but I am just terrified for kids with in athletics. We do not have the knowledge whether or not a child is playing football that might have just a little tick in the heart that if his oxygen level goes down just a hair, could trigger a heart attack and heart failure. I want you to think also of people in nursing homes with absolute anxiety or perhaps the dementia, and their loved ones coming into the, or in the hospital at the moment of death, and all they see is a mask and they cannot even recognize that individual. That person has a disability. He has the right to see the expressions on a person's face. And that is why the American with Disabilities Act was, was written. That's why Public Law 94142 was enacted. Both of those are federal laws, the Trump state laws or state mandates. Now, if Mona wanted to sue, and it was thrown out by the Supreme Court of Oregon, she could sue all the way to the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court would have to hold because, and I can't give you it right now, I had a book like this of all the laws and all the cases that, that was under 94142 and the ADA, that she would win in the Supreme Court. And actually, any public official in Oregon could be sued right along with the businesses all the way to the Supreme Court, and they would win because 94142 and ADA trumps any mandate that Kate Brown would authorize. And I would suggest you guys write a charter right away. Please? Because the whole county is in violation of federal law. And I'm amazed that no one has, has, has taken that to the Supreme Court yet.
I think they've tried, and that's the thing. Like with the county, when it comes to OSHA.
OSHA doesn't trump public, federal law.
They, they, what are, what are we supposed to do? Where's the law that says the county has the authority over OSHA?
It is written in the
Go ahead and comment if you'd like to comment.
The, the, can I just
The laws are, are based on who has authorities, okay? And as I understand, everything in the Constitution has been supported by, if it's not specified as against something, it, it reverts to the, the next lower entity. Or, I'm having a little trouble with this, but if there is no specific law, as an example, federal law, that prohibits citizens from doing something, no junior factor has the ability to override that. Does this make any sense?
Oh yeah, I mean, we can make laws more strict, but we can't, any state or federal law. We can, we can make them more strict, but we can't make them more legal.
How about if you apply the Constitution to that law?
Yeah, the ADA, one of the stance that, that I don't think anybody is recognizing is OSHA. OSHA is, I took a case to OSHA when I was teaching because kids were coming into our school perfectly healthy and all of a sudden they were having to use inhalers. And it was at the same time I was diagnosed with environmental asthma because of the environment in the school. I called OSHA and I said, our kids are getting asthma and they're having to use inhalers. Can you come in and check our air quality? OSHA said, no, we cannot because our mandate is only over employees. It is not over patrons or it is not over students. It is only over employees. And so with the mask mandate under ADA, which again would trump any OSHA thing because OSHA has to, has to follow ADA as well. An employee that could not wear a mask because of health reasons, under OSHA, OSHA would have to, by law, allow that individual to go without a mask or provide a reasonable accommodation for them, which they already have with everything in light view with the plexiglass in front of them. I worked under it for years and years and years, and believe me, I had to know it. Or I couldn't, by the way, I could have been taken to law if I hadn't have followed it to the absolute letter. A parent could have sued me personally. And I could have been fired.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just say just a couple things. We've been at this for months now.
Year.
Yeah, over a year. I don't think we've, we've been technically fighting OSHA for a year yet. Because I think about this time last year, we were told that we were going to have several hundred people dead by the end of March.
Sure.
And we, we were very concerned. I mean, and good reason. We didn't know what was coming. We didn't know what we were in for. We braced ourselves for an impact that never really came. And I've spoken multiple times with Director Wood at OSHA. I have his cell phone number. I've called him repeatedly about issues here in our county, about businesses that in my personal belief have been victimized by OSHA. We've, we've been attacked from multiple different angles, but we are still here, we're still standing, and we're going to keep going. Do we like the victimization of the businesses? Absolutely not. One of the things that was told to us some time ago was that we needed to open the county.
Sorry.
We didn't close it, though. And that's been the struggle with the state. It's been our fight, it's been our argument, it's been our, I'll, I'll even say it's even been our excuse. You know, honesty, because, sorry, you have
I just have a question about this.
Yes, sir.
There's about a half a dozen or more counties in the state of Oregon now that have openly told Brown and OSHA, stay away, go away, we're open, period. How do you account for the other counties that won't do that?
I, I'm not aware of any counties in the state
That have listened on the
Have been able to keep OSHA out.
They have the capability, sheriff can tell the OSHA, stay out. All you have to do is have the resolution to nullify OSHA's ability to come here.
Well, then again, see, do we really want to keep OSHA completely out of our county? I mean, when I worked with the song, now OSHA is there, they look after employees, there's certain, we get into an area that we're really stepping out of our lane.
Well, they are on their way, that's the problem.
And that's, that's what we're trying to rein in.
Make your own county, OSHA.
Well, how could you, could you not roll back OSHA to do exactly what they are mandated to do to
Yeah, they're so, are, are the
Take care of employees only, that the resolution would say they have no authority accept over the welfare of the employees. Instead, do your own research.
I will say that there are businesses in Lake County that have been open for many, many months now and simply because they're proprietor owned and they don't have employees. And so OSHA doesn't have any authority over them.
Exactly.
But
So, there, there's a group of citizens in Lake County that don't agree with the mask law. I'm one of them, I don't agree with it. However, there are people in Lake County that have that right to agree with the mask law.
That's right.
That's right.
Yeah, that is
And as long as they wear it, they're protected.
So what's happened is So what's happened is, um I'm the director of our adult juvenile probation department. I had to disprove a client who had some health related issues by the client with OSHA. So I had to respond to OSHA and what my client was in order to accommodate him, let alone accommodate everybody else. Because unfortunately with OSHA, it's one size fits all.
Okay, was the complaint verified? Did you get to see in how we have that complaint?
I did.
And what was the complaint?
The complaint was that we weren't wearing masks, we weren't protecting him. We weren't we weren't being protected, we weren't accommodating his needs, let alone anybody else's needs. So it was a legit complaint and I had to respond with a I had to respond. I went with a plan to accommodate him as well as everybody else because unfortunately, OSHA is a one size fits all. Um, so I had to I had to type up, the county didn't take on bear that responsibility, I did because it's my department. So unfortunately, there's those of us that don't agree and you're absolutely right about the ADA. I don't wear masks behind my ears because my hair needs to be processed. I don't have to, I don't need to. Um, I'm told I have to and I I choose not to visit those businesses at the time I have to. And that's my choice. Um, they have a choice to let me in or let me out.
And that was a point that I was kind of coming to next. That we individually have a choice. To not support the businesses that mandate that we wear a mask.
Where are you gonna go for Safeway?
Well, there are other other stores and I actually drive out of town sometimes.
But those businesses cannot discriminate against you under the ADA.
And I I don't I don't disagree with you. I I and and you make really good points on the ADA front. We've been making that point since the middle of last year. When the when these rules were first coming out with OSHA. We made it to our senators, we made it to our reps, we fought with OSHA, I made those per arguments personally to Director Wood.
Darius, I I thought of something uh yes, the other day that might be a solution. And that might accommodate everybody. Remem I did, well, you guys are young. But in the seventies, we had odd even days for gas. And we all remembered it. How about we have odd even days for masklessness? And businesses that anyone can go in on the maskless days, they can wear the mask. You guys could write an ordinance to that. And and people who didn't want to wear masks could go into those stores on those days. And then there would be maybe even days that it was masked solely. That would be under ADA, a reasonable accommodation.
Guys remember at the very beginning of this pandemic. How uh Safeway, other stores. Had a certain time delegated for older people. Early in the morning, they could go in, nobody else. Okay, just prevent any uh exposure at the work. Alright, this is exactly the duty saying the same difference. Yeah.
Yeah.
Or better yet, turn it all voluntary, strictly voluntary.
So I I don't wanna be the only one talking here, but I. I I'll just I'll just kinda say this, I'm. We're we're gonna we're gonna keep fighting on this, we're gonna keep pushing, we haven't stopped. But I I just wanna make this one point. When you wish to create a government that can fix all of your problems. You will have a government that can take all you have.
That's what we have now.
So be careful not to ask for that at the local level too. The reason I say that is because I do believe. That a tremendous amount of what we're talking about today really does come down to individual personal responsibility. And the individual's choice and their freedom to choose what is best for them. Many people in this county still believe it necessary to wear a mask and I'm not saying that it isn't. I'm simply stating that I don't have the authority to tell them they don't wear a mask. I don't have any authority to tell them to wear a mask and we haven't taken that stance to enforce those things. We just we just haven't, our sheriff hasn't and the county commissioners have not. Because that is not within our purview to tell people how to live their their lives. So writing ordinances are good and dandy, do they really hold up? We have ordinances, I can tell you, we have a dozen ordinances right now. That have been standing for many, many years that are not adhered to. By the residents and by this county.
But the thing is, see, if you're not, if you're not mandating. Or writing a resolution that the businesses in Lake County. And in fact, all entities, all public entities in Lake County, follow the ADA. You're in violation of federal. When 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 the county, when the when the people under your jurisdiction in the county. When you are not enforcing a federal law. To protect the rights of the the disabled in Lake County. And just like, just like you had to do with your public works. When you had when you had uh to make the little dips in sidewalks so they were wheelchair accessible. You would be in you would have been in violation of federal law had you not. Forced public works to do it. You would be in violation. So if you are not protecting the rights of this disabled in Lake County. You're in violation of the ADA and ninety four one forty two. Federal law, which. Trumps state law.
I know where you could open a business without being ADA accessible.
You can't, you could be closed down, you could would be closed down by the feds immediately. Probation would be closed down by the feds immediately.
This was an argument that was made on the over of the special session last year.
Uh, the jail. You would not be able to operate the jail if it was not ADA compliant.
When when we first started this and they come down with the mask mandate. We had a sign on the county courthouse doors that said. State requires you to wear a mask, but if you don't wear one or assuming you have. Disability not to.
And we would not question you about it.
Question, I don't know if those are still on, are they?
And why can't you write an ordinance to allow the businesses to make that decision? Cause OSHA hasn't come after you for it.
Partly because the businesses are not necessarily under our. About what? Sorry, excuse me, I didn't.
OSHA has, well, they come after jail and so.
The thing is, if 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 people do not stand up against that. Which is illegal, unlawful. Then you absolutely, we've lost everything, the next thing will be uh.
Mandatory vaccines.
Yeah, or uh.
It's an incremental.
Or and perfect and what I see happening right now because of some of the people that are being put in at federal level. Who have said that nobody over the age of seventy five has quality of life. That they could mandate that Medicare no longer provides insulin to anyone over the seventy five that has diabetes. But it's exactly but how Germany got started in that, it was because the fear of government hurting them. And and unless the people stand up and say, we are the government, it is going to happen. It will happen.
Commissioners, I I have a question. Uh, Mr. Schuhlenberger. When I was here the last time, I gave them a rendition of my my research and my education that I had done. And it appears to me that neither of you really understand what jurisdiction is. Are you open to a class on jurisdiction? Or are you open to watching a video on a class that I have done on jurisdiction?
So when you came in and proposed that, I asked specifically for any ORS. Stating that the county has jurisdiction over anything on the state. And. You didn't provide any ORS that stated that.
You're right, and that's because you are an agent of the county. But because you have jurisdiction within this county. You have the right to protect the people in this county, to protect their the Declaration of Independence, to protect everything. And you can do it by writing it under health, safety and welfare. You do it all the time. The only thing that the state can do is sue you and that isn't gonna happen. These other counties haven't been sued. Number one, it would take too long and would cost too much money. But you have to understand jurisdiction. Fortunately for you, the jurisdiction that I have taught is federal jurisdiction. Now, if any of you can explain to me under Article One, Section Eight, Clause Seventeen. What it is and where federal jurisdiction is. Mr. Schuhlenberger.
No, I can't.
Okay.
So that, if I remember right. Federal jurisdiction only is for uh farmers, interstate farmers.
No. Article One, Section Eight, Clause Seventeen. Forests, magazines, arsenals, dockyards and other needful buildings. That's it. And you've got seventy two agencies from the federal government. Everything else lies within the state.
Exactly, that's the problem.
But.
Not the county.
But wasn't, aren't you under county a county that you can write a charter and that you can?
We we could write charters, but they're not the. Holding watch, that's the problem.
What can they?
Against the state.
What can they do?
Puts us on slightly better ground.
It does, absolutely, especially if you write that charter. Or you write that ordinance and you specifically lay out that the sheriff has the authority. For any agent from the state that disobeys your charter, your resolution and arrests them. Give him that authority.
I think Facebook yesterday had something, I think it was Josephine County, the the commissioners are meeting. To instruct the uh the sheriff. To uh let OSHA know that they are no longer welcome in, isn't that Jackson County? It maybe it is Jackson.
I posted that on both of your Facebook Facebook messages.
And I was aware of that night, I've been in touch with the Jackson County Commissioner.
Yeah, it it. It truly is and it boils down to if you don't do it, it is the example that I gave you. It will happen somewhere.
I'm not I'm not disagreeing with you guys, that's one thing I don't understand. I don't disagree with you one bit, but.
If you don't try though, there is going to be a high school athlete. That will die because of oxygen eh, the oxygen level, they need the oxygen. I I will give you an example, I went into the hospital and I will wear a mask in the hospital, I wore a mask to go in. My blood oxygen level is normally ninety seven to a hundred percent. When my oxygen level was taken. After I'd gone in wearing a mask before I could take it down in when they had put me into the patient room. My oxygen level was ninety three. So there was a drop of seven, about seven percent. Now think about that, think if a kid already has asthma as and is in the midst of an asthma attack. And his normal oxygen level is ninety three and he's out there on the field running. With a mask on. And all of a sudden, his oxygen level drops ten percent. Can you imagine what's going to happen to him? And and when you have had the authority to do something about it and have not done it, you're culpable. Just like I would be as a teacher. If I did not make a reasonable accommodation for a kid that was in gym class. Uh, one of my handicapped youngsters that was in gym class. That I forced to run. And they had a heart attack, I would have been culpable because I would have been told that that was a possibility. Even though the state has has jurisdiction over me.
They had the same conversation with an employee over at Safeway here a few days ago. She's turning kind of fragile because of issues, okay? This mask thing has been uh increasing a problem for her. Ever since this was mandated over there for employees, okay? What was it, she said she lost.
Oxygen loss.
I think she said she's she's lost now uh approaching ninety percent of her.
Eighty six percent.
Eighty six percent of her blood oxygen level from wearing a mask. She finally told Safeway, uh forget it and she put this little bikini mask thing on, looks like uh looks like a bikini, yeah. Uh, that's that's one. We have a neighbor rancher whose daughter was a star cross country athlete here in Lakeview. Okay, she elected to go to uh. The the tech tech college in class there. Because they had such an excellent cross country program. And she just wanted to continue on this. She lasted one semester. When she had so many asthma attacks because they required her to wear a mask when she's running. Think about that one, anybody that's done physical labor, it's almost impossible. And she was forced to withdraw from the the athletic program completely. Her supposed career is shot. She had so much damage to her lungs from running with a mask on. This is a, I bet you could find a a hundred, two hundred people in this county easy. That have had very severe reactions to this mask thing. Something has to be done, you guys are the start. And that's where it really comes down to.
Can I just ask real quick, do any of you happen to know because I'm not sure. About what OSAA is requiring as far as masks for athletics? Because I was under the impression that sports like cross country and football. Or at least cross country, that they won't be needing to wear masks, is that not correct?
So I don't wanna speak out of turn.
Masks are mandated, uh yeah, in fact, it was on TV the other day.
Some school districts.
The school school district, I think it was in Josephine County, Medford. They're requiring football players to wear masks.
Well, right, but so that's my question is since we are in a different. Probably a different category than Josephine or Jackson County would be. I was just wondering if anyone knew.
Level and things like that.
Yeah, for for risk level and for, you know.
I I would have to just go to the OSAA website.
Okay.
Uh, well, and the mandate says all the public places, all school activities.
Okay.
That's what it says, yeah.
I guess I'll have to check it out.
But you can go to other states and there's sports for that.
Yeah, they can. Uh, in fact, uh some of our teams just went to Idaho and they don't do that, okay? This is a this is endemic thing from. Our governor and her her for power. This thing is, we are experiencing in this rural county. Uh, restrictions or attempted restrictions that don't even come close to other states. You know, uh, we need to start somewhere, guys.
If if we did another every other day, uh masks that people could buy, could go without masks. You can almost approach that as a scientific study. That you are uh do writing an ordinance for a scientific study which is research based. Because then you would have a way of tracing. Who was getting infected and who wasn't and it would be a real. It would be something that would actually be research based. Because the people were getting sicker who were going to the stores maskless on those. on those days, you could trace it.
There's also another way, uh, some good friends of mine own a restaurant in Roseburg called Casey's. Do you know what their attorney told them? They no longer have employees, they have volunteers. Okay, that's what they have is volunteers, we tip them better once we're there. And I'm here to tell you, there isn't a customer that comes into that place that I've spent many hours in there that's much under fifty years old, and none of them wear a mask. Gone for a year, commissioners. We need to find a way.
Or shareholders, co-ops. If, if businesses until this time was over, uh, went to a cooperative uh, thing that, uh, gosh, all their, all their patrons, they pay a dollar and, and they're now part of the co-op.
Again, those are, those would be individual business choices.
Yeah, but that, that's something that could be thrown out to them as a possibility.
Well, and that's why, you know, we're allowing for an hour of public comment to enable you guys to have, have that public comment here before this board so that we can talk about these things and have open dialogue as a community should.
I'm available, my, my expertise is research, and so if there's anything you want researched, let me know, I'll research it for you, and I won't charge you a dime.
I would suggest that you read, you read the ADA
Yes.
in, in real, real depth and read the commentaries on it, and read the HIPAA laws and the commentaries on it. And that is federal law that every single agency, uh, for instance, in schools, if they did not comply with the ADA, they would not get any federal funds. That would be an automatic thing. If they did not comply, if there was enough, uh, complaints against them, they would not get federal funds. So that is how federal trumps state mandates or state laws. And the same thing with HIPAA. They would no longer be able to get federal funds if they violate HIPAA. So it, I know you guys are caught in a catch twenty-two, but federal law ninety-four, one forty-two, uh, the ADA, HIPAA, and the other one that is for other businesses, what is it, HIPAA? Anyhow, uh, it, it mirrors HIPAA. And it is primarily for other, other businesses other than, uh, medical. I can't see.
Well, if there are any comments from other gentlemen?
I just want to just say one quick thing is, I don't think there's been a day gone by that we haven't been working on.
You might try, um, you might try getting in touch with a, an attorney that specializes in handicapped laws. Because they might be able to give you a whole guidance in this. But if, and there will be, if there is a handicapped individual that is damaged because of this mask mandate, you will be sued. Uh, because it will be a handicapped lawyer, uh, and in or, in order to get my specialist license to be a, a teacher of the handicapped, I had to pass along a law of, say, on, uh, the handicapped laws. And believe me, the cases that have been sued, all the way, Brown versus the Board of Education started out at a lower level, at, at a county level. And everybody that touched that case, all the way up to the Supreme Court was sued. And that was, that, that includes every official in the county, in the school, in the state, all the way up. So that, I wish I, I wish I still had my law book, but when I retired, I got rid of it. But get in touch with a handicapped attorney. They'll. And you can probably get in touch by getting, uh, in touch with Reach in Climate Falls who has the, uh, the People with Disabilities Shelter Court shop. And they will have, uh, probably the best
Working belt.
Attorney for the, the client, not an attorney for the business, because the, an attorney for the client is who you wanna talk to, cause they know all the ins and outs.
Well, I appreciate all the public comment. Appreciate the conversation, and, uh, if we could take a short four-minute break uh, before our timed item at eleven o'clock. Gentlemen, just a quick, quick little break.
I appreciate you coming in front of us.
Thank you.
It's up the top of our attention.
Well, and I am sorry I sound so adamant, but I have been
No, Judy.
An advocate for the handicapped for pretty much forty years now. And I've worked through the lawsuits, and I've been an expert witness in some of the cases. So use Brown's law against her.
Um.
That's probably good.
Um, what? We're having a little technical difficulties with the audio, sorry. Oh, okay. Um.
The ID guys are on the article.
Speaking of.
Great to know.
I see a thing. So, uh, um, I don't know which one of you, if, if Brad, I can see you're on the line, if you wanna go first and give us a little bit of an update, I see mostly just fluorescent lights, but, um. It's awesome. Brad Brown.
I think you're gonna be.
My cell.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll take it.
I'm killing something there. Uh, just kind of little background on this real quick, I'm not sure everybody knows, uh, our background, but we've worked with the county for, since two thousand and four. Uh, in that time, we've only been down once, and that was for about twenty-four hours, and we worked thirty-eight hours straight to make sure everything was up and running. Uh, we do work with eight other counties, uh, five of them here in Oregon and three up in Washington. Uh, we're Sages Level Four certified to work with sheriff's departments and district attorneys, we're HIPAA compliant, uh, bonded, E and O, insurance, all that kind of good stuff. So that's a little background on, on ACTEC or ATS. Uh, I guess the, the reason for the meeting today is an update on where we are in some of the key issues that we've been, we've been fighting. And with COVID, uh, last year, all the bad guys were able to sit at home and generate news. Uh, we call it malware and ransomware. And I'm sure as you noticed in the new.
This should call.
Hang on.
Brad, I've, I've, uh.
Hang on. What's going on?
I don't know.
No, it's chosen that TV is the audio source, I believe.
It switched halfway through my Bluetooth, that's all the time, right?
Brad, can you hear us?
I can, okay. Yeah, it wasn't me. Yeah. No, I think the TVs just suddenly decided to switch audio source, and so we've got you on the other TV at the back of the room now. Okay, cool. Um, so as I was talking, uh, mentioning, we had a county here in Oregon that, um, was hit with ransomware. And, uh, they make great cheese there. Uh, also a small town, uh, here in Oregon got hit with ransomware. And that's where the bad guys come in and, and, uh, encrypt your files. And for you to get the key to unlock your files so you have access to your files, uh, you have to pay them money. And, uh, the county ended up costing them over three hundred thousand dollars. And there's only a fifty-fifty chance that they're gonna send you the key, cause they're bad guys, we don't know where in the world they are, you pay the money on Bitcoin. So ransomware and malware has increased a hundred, one hundred and seventy percent since last year. So security has been our main focus at all of our clients. Um, the other one is, uh, what we call phishing attempts. Uh, it's PH instead of F on the phishing, uh, where they try and get your information through emails and other areas of the internet. So what we've implemented at the county is we use a product called BitDefender as your virus and malware protection. And it, it does a great job because it automatically backs up files. It is the number one rated, uh, virus protection software, uh, in the world. So we've kind of standardized everybody on that. Um, as you know, we've been having, uh, fun with VPN connections with COVID. That's for virtual private networks, it's kind of like making a secure connection to your home when you're working from home. And then a major project that took us, uh, months was, we wanted to take the county up to a federal level of security. And it's called FIPS, F-I-P-S, one forty dash two level of security. So it took us months to implement that, but we really feel that that was important, and we're trying to do that at all of our clients. So we have that federal level of security. Uh, we also increased our wireless protection. Uh, we're now implementing another layer of protection on the network that allows us uh, to see if there are any viruses or anything on people's PCs and then be able to take care of it right away. So I wanna, does anybody have any questions on that, by the way?
No.
Well, I know, if I get too geeky, just let me know and I'll, I'll stop. Uh, one of the key things that we'd really like to work on this year at the county is user training. And the reason why user training is so important, and we, we, we've done this, actually, we did this in, uh, Lake County, I believe in two thousand and thirteen. Things have changed a lot since then, so we really need to revisit that. Uh, we've done some training recently at some of the other counties and, and over seventy percent of the issues like ransomware that happened at, at Tillamook County, uh, and also your viruses come from the users, and it's not their fault.